The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Welcome to our November boardwork session. President McCoy is traveling, so I will be facilitating our meeting tonight. We'll be starting with roll call. Kinsey, please.
McCoy.
She's excused.
Smith.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Layton and Warren.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Okay, we have six board members present. The first item on the agenda will be public forum, and we have two speakers tonight. Our first speaker will be Dr. Colleen Timm.
Good evening.
Yep, if you could just state, oh.
All right, how's it?
Yeah, if you could just state your name and address.
Colleen Timm, 595 Baiton Road, Green Bay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you for having me. First thing I'm going to tell you is every time I come in the Green Bay schools, I think of this. My dad is eighty-two years old, and he went to the Green Bay schools. And as a young man, he worked in the Green Bay schools. And he has been my biggest champion for education my entire career. So my advanced degrees and the work that I do. And I think so often when I come in here that he got a start in these walls. So the work you're doing is good and important, and I've been a champion of it for thirty-three years. And I'm a champion and a supporter of the Green Bay schools because that's where he got his start. So keep doing good work on that end of things. I have shared with you a brochure. So I am new in my role at CISA VII since July one. I had worked at CISA VII for four years prior as a Learning Services Director. And prior to that, I have experience as a superintendent, a principal, in urban, suburban, and rural school districts. So what is a CISA? There are twelve of us in the state. We serve in this area thirty-eight school districts, about ninety thousand students, and eight thousand educators. We provide all kinds of services. As one of our five largest districts in the state, you have a direct pipeline to the DPI for a lot of your services. So we spend maybe a little bit less time in Green Bay than we do some of our other school districts. But because we write for grants and contracts to provide free services, we do bring those to you as well. For instance, this fall, there was an opportunity to partake in nursing services, and we facilitate that grant. Right now, we're giving out grants for computer science services. And again, that's available to all of our school districts, no matter the size. So again, inside the brochure, you'll see a wide range of the services that we provide. We have some QR codes. You can put your phone camera on that and learn some more. In addition to our core academic areas, we are newly serving Green Bay schools this year with the Youth Apprenticeship Program. Super excited about that. I'm super excited about connecting kids with purpose, making sure that every kid in Green Bay graduates with a diploma by design. And I think we're going to see your metrics change as kids really get excited and connected to the plan that they want to pursue when they leave your walls. So we're thrilled to be partnering with you on that. We do a lot of work on licensure, so we know there's a shortage of people coming into the field of education. We need to open up a variety of pathways for people to enter the field, and we support our districts on that. So DPI has given out some of that work and role to the CIs. So if you have people that want to come in from industry, if they have a degree in something else, or you have them employed already, and they want to add a degree, we support that work. So just wanted to say hello, let you know we're right down the street at CISA VII and here to serve you in any way that we can as your needs arise. And we are your biggest champions. So let us know if we can help you along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be hearing from Renee Avery.
Good evening. I just wanted to share with you one less-known alternative option for students who are at risk of not graduating due to attendance issues or credit deficiency. It is the Wisconsin National Guard Challenge Academy. The Green Bay Area Public Schools is a partner with this voluntary program, which is on a military base for students ages sixteen years, nine months, and/or a second semester junior to eighteen years old. Their mission: to offer our cadets the opportunity to develop the strength of character and the life skills necessary to become successful, responsible citizens. Students who need and choose this option move temporarily to Fort McCoy, located between Toma and Sparta, and live on a military base for twenty-two weeks. The first two weeks is called the pre-challenge. Cadets give up their personal items, yes, including their cell phones and clothing, receive haircuts, and wear only Challenge Academy-issued uniforms. During this time, cadets learn to replace negative behaviors, attitudes, and skills, and learn more about the daily experiences of healthy routines and a highly structured and disciplined environment. Challenge Academy staff has shared with me that if cadets can adjust to the physical, mental, and social discipline during those two weeks, they usually have the perseverance to make it through the entire program, and so then move on to what's called the residential phase. Here, the Challenge Academy works on eight core components: academic excellence, physical fitness, leadership-follower-ship, responsible citizenship, job skills, service to community, health and hygiene, and life coping skills. Intertwined in all of this work is additional work on developing social, emotional, and basic life skills. All cadets need to have a same-sex, non-immediate-family-member mentor who helps support the cadets both during the residential phase and the twelve-month post-residential phase, in which cadets are expected to continue their education, gain employment, or join the military. I've had the honor of visiting the Challenge Academy a few times. Each time I'm impressed with the cadet's stories of why they chose to attend there and how it has changed their lives. Some had no interest in school and rarely attended. Some were getting into trouble all the time and making poor decisions with their friends. Some had a difficult home life, and this was the only way to escape while not giving up on their future. And one even shared that it was the only way he knew how to get away from the pressures of the gang he belonged to back home. One of my most recent visits, at one of my most recent visits, several Packers also visited, and they were impressed that these students, who for some reason were not successful in a traditional school setting, were not only succeeding but taking on leadership roles. They couldn't believe the young adults were thriving without their phones, music, and laptops, which they do not even get access to a computer until Week Eight. They have to earn the right to sit on their beds, which, like you see in military movies, must be made in a certain way. Students have to earn minutes to make phone calls on a landline phone on the weekends. It is not an easy choice, but they all believe they needed something drastically different in their lives. When asked why they or what they enjoyed the most about being at the Challenge Academy, answers varied. This was the first time they were away from Green Bay, meeting people from all over the state and sharing a barracks with this new family. This was the first time they felt part of a team. Seen Black Hawk helicopters all the time. That's how the Packers arrived. They were provided with three healthy meals a day, and for some, that was a huge difference, and there was no junk food. With no cell phones, no social media, and no TVs came less drama and a time to focus on themselves. And for some, it was the first time in their entire lives that they chose to read and finish books. Here are just some of the experiences for the cadets, and for many, it's the first time they have done some of these. Each day, the cadets are up early. They literally toe the line at 5:20 a.m. and have some form of physical training. This may include marching and/or running while participating in a traditional call-and-response military cadence, and of course, lots of push-ups. They have at least four hours of schooling each day. Cadets do their own laundry and clean up after themselves. Their platoons have competitions against other platoons, including tug-of-war and archery. They complete service to the community and present to schools. Cadets go biking together, camp out with their platoon, take tours of places like the state Capitol, and learn about trades, colleges, and military opportunities with onsite presentations. Cadets complete a ten-mile honor road march and earn their dog tags. They participate in drill teams and participate in events all over the state. Some have made their color guard and have been courtside at Milwaukee Bucks games. Cadets become first aid certified. And cadets develop self-worth, change the way they see themselves, and can prove to others that they can achieve great things. They develop pride, which extends to their families. Our students who earn their certificate of completion from the Wisconsin National Guard Challenge Academy also earn their Green Bay Area Public Schools diploma. I'm almost done. Thank you. From their school while also earning a minimum of seven free college credits from the Western Technical College. I invite anyone interested to look over the website for more information on this great program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I forgot to introduce our inner-city Student Council members. So would you care to introduce yourselves and your schools you're from, please?
My name is Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Prebble, and I'm the president of Inner City Student Council.
My name is Gule Dala. I'm a senior at East High School.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. We don't have any items for the education portion of the agenda, so we're going to go straight to operations. The first item on the agenda is a referendum. And I get the opportunity to thank the taxpayers of Green Bay for voting in favor of our referendum. It was, there are a lot of unknowns for people right now, and I think everybody sitting at the table is probably in the same boat with the recent property tax assessments. A lot of people saw their, the values in their homes go up, and then we came and we asked the community to vote for a ninety-two-million-dollar referendum. And overwhelmingly, the referendum passed. We saw sixty-four referendums pass across the state. And it says a lot about the community's support of public education. And it's going to make a huge difference for our schools, our students, and our community. And it was just, it was a really uncertain time. So I know, I personally say thank you. I think everybody at the table would agree with me. It was a, it was a good night on Tuesday night when the referendum passed. So thank you to everybody. The last referendum, we paid off early. We saved millions of dollars. And I know that the plan is that we will be aggressive in paying back this current referendum. So thank you to everyone. Vicki?
Thanks, Ms. Smith. I'd like to recognize some of the staff that dedicated a good portion of the, the whole school year, actually, so far, and a good portion of the summer to getting out and sharing with the public what the referendum was all about. Lori Blakesley, who is our Director of Communications, and all of the media information that you saw, the signs, the postcards, all were developed by her in her office. Josh Pachek, who put himself out there doing a ton of media. And I really think that helped the community understand what the impact would be. So thank you, Josh. And Angie Roble and Sarah Noah for hitting the ground on some of those meetings as well. And Judy Wiegand, the public sessions. Every opportunity that they had to get out there to explain what we're asking for and why we really needed it, they said yes to. So thank you, team. And also to Denise Gomer Hutchinson. She led the Yes Committee, the Community Committee, who, they had the ability to ask people to vote for this. We, as a school district, cannot do that. So she picked that up and ran with it. And then, of course, all of the staff and parents and community members that were supportive. Ninety-two point six million, it's a lot. And we are going to be very transparent and keep the public updated on the work that we're doing over the next couple of years. And with that, why don't we kick that off? Josh, if you could come over and just provide an update, and what are our next steps?
Yeah, thank you. The next steps occurred right away on Wednesday morning, to be honest with you. There are a number of projects that we had tried to plan in the past but had been unable to fund. So a number of those projects are in varying states of readiness to execute. I would expect some orders going in as early as this week or early next week on some capital purchases. Met with a blast from the past, Mike Stangle today, who has agreed in his, in his retirement to help us out with some, with the procurement process, especially with respect to the projects that require architectural services. And he'll also be doing a little bit of project management. And, you know, his background is in design, so he'll be doing some design for us as well. And also transferring knowledge to the next generation of people here who are stewards of this, of this capital. So we're hitting the ground running. It's going to be a lot of work over the next probably two and a half years before all the projects are complete. We're hoping to get a number of projects ready to go for the beginning of the next school year. We'd like to prioritize, in particular, those field projects so that we can begin the fall season on a new surface with new stadium. Any questions?
Thank you, Josh. And then finally, to the Board of Education, thank you for your support. Our goal is to not let you down. We hope that when we have the final products, you'll be proud that you played a major role in making this happen. Thank you.
And thank you, Vicki. You put a lot of time and energy into this, so thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, the EAP recommendations. I believe we have Beck Krasinski from 3M.
As well as Lori Myron, our HR.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Beck Krasinski as our regional director of M3 and has been our broker for some time. I don't even know how many years, but a lot, long before me. And then Jessica Cortez, who is our HR specialist on benefits. And we'll just, we have a good color point to show you a little bit about the EAP program.
Thanks very much. Kinsey, if you would go to the next slide, please. So as we're working on the slide, I'll just kind of talk through some of the background for you. In March of 2021, so we're going back just a bit, Green Bay Schools executed a new three-year contract with the Employee Resource Center for EAP services, Employee Assistance Program services, which would have extended through June 30th of 2024. In June of this past year, June 2022, ERC notified the school district that they would be discontinuing those services. With that notification, then we worked with the school district and with ERC to be able to continue services through the end of December 2022. As part of that, then we needed to find an alternative vendor on a go-forward basis. So we did conduct a public request for proposal that went through Green Bay's procurement department and used their procedures and their software to get that RFP out. And I'll talk more about the marketing results after I share a little bit about employee feedback. But that just kind of sets the stage for why we're here with a recommendation for you this evening. So on the next slide, then, we just gave you some highlights about some of the feedback and communication that we've done through employees. So first, once we were notified that that agreement and contract with ERC would be terminated, we did communicate with employees over the summer months. At that same time, we started the process for developing the request for proposals and sent a survey out to employees in September. We gathered the employee feedback and also shared that with our benefits advisory committee to review the feedback from their peers, and then reviewing the survey input in comparison with the four different vendors who had submitted a complete proposal to the RFP process. We held a finalist meeting in the middle of October and then brought that feedback from the finalist meeting back to the benefit advisory committee again so that we could use the finalist meeting as well as the presentations to make a recommendation to the board. So that gets us to where we are now. But we also wanted to share with you a little bit more about what we heard in that feedback. So two hundred and sixty-nine employees responded to the survey. Of those folks, sixty-five percent of the respondents had used EAP services. So we were really pleased to see that people who had used the services were willing to share feedback with us about what they found valuable in the services from their employee assistance program. Some of the most important pieces of feedback we included in the presentation here for you. So it was very important to the respondents that there be virtual options as well as in-person options for how to access the counselors. They also preferred a local vendor for EAP services. Additionally, they wanted to continue access to that gatekeeper referral model. Some of you are likely very familiar with the gatekeeper model. It's an important part of our health plan where people have access to additional mental health services through the health plan after utilizing EAP services. But in the past, we've offered ten visits for the Employee Assistance Program, and members who utilize those services had to access all ten counselor visits before they could access a different level of mental health care. So some of the feedback was that they liked to access that sooner rather than have to work through ten sessions with a counselor that maybe wasn't providing the right level of care before they could move on to develop a different relationship with a different provider and get where they needed to go. It was also very important to the respondents that we had comprehensive crisis response support from the outside agencies in addition to the services here in the district. An affiliate network for out-of-area dependents was also important for those college-age students or for retirees who are out of the area, having access to providers outside of just the local system. And then also access to care at different times of the day. And the responsiveness of being able to see a provider within a reasonable amount of time was important. And then finally, the diversity of the providers through the EAP system was of note on the survey responses. So all of that feedback from your staff was taken into consideration as we worked through the marketing process. So as I mentioned, we worked with Josh and his team in procurement, and that public request for proposals went out, and we targeted known EAP vendors as well as just publicly releasing the RFP for anyone who wanted to respond. Seven vendors did respond to the request. Three of those declined to quote, though, because of the increased utilization and the need to be able to provide an appropriate level of service. So given the capacity of their organization, they were unable to provide a proposal for us at this time. So that left us with four vendors that were considered. Three of them were a hospital-based program, and one was a national vendor.
So our recommendation tonight is we would like to move forward with the advocate of our employee assistance program. They offer some of the things that our employees were asking for: the onsite, the virtual, telephonic experiences, counseling, unlimited crisis response center, which was very huge for us. They will go off to all the different schools. Anytime we call them, if they have somebody available, they will send somebody to those schools, districts, wherever they need to be. Unlimited EAP training for education in members and administrators. They have that gatekeeper model that Beck was talking about, so the continuation of the care. We're also looking to go to six-session model. So as Beck was saying, our employees were seeing the ten models currently that we have sessions. They're building that relationship with them, and then they're switching over to somebody else. So this one, six sessions, is less to build that relationship with somebody else, but then to get them sooner to care, continuing the care through the provider. So we're looking to move to the succession through Aurora EAP. Some of our proposed next steps is we're already working on a communication to send out via email to all of our employees. We would have something in the staff scoop, flyers. We'll take down all the ERC flyers that are currently at all the locations, put up Aurora flyers, educate employees on the services, coordinate communication with ERC, letting them know that our employees are now eligible for the new vendor to start working with them. We'll transition, the employees currently in progress with ERC, they can either transition to Aurora, or ERC has verbally agreed that they will continue on up to those ten sessions with those employees that they're currently seeking. And it continues seeking feedback from our employees on the current program if we do move through Aurora and find ways to continue supporting holistic well-being. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Yep, any questions?
Who made up the Benefit Advisory Committee?
I had sent something out in the staff scoop and asked for employees to volunteer. So anybody who was interested, send me an email, and is on the Benefits Advisory Committee.
So then it ended up to be teachers and administrators, and like, how many people was that?
About twenty-three we have on the team right now, and yes, it's a wide variety. Andrew?
So why, why do we even, why is it good for our staff to even have a model with, with six visits that you have to do through the EAP? I mean, ten, it's, it's better than ten, but six still, six still seems like a lot, especially if people are often transitioning providers?
So six session is the industry standard. That's what the EAP providers recommend for where the balance is between things that can be handled through an employee assistance program and things that need referral. Typically, what they find is that if it can't be solved in six, it needs a referral. But a lot of issues that you would want to access short-term counseling for can be solved in six issues. Excuse me, six visits.
So it's, it's a cost thing, though, because otherwise you wouldn't have it at all. I mean, I'm sorry, I should refer that. There are certainly, there's certainly some speed advantages to, I would imagine. But I guess I'm just thinking of, again, if, you know, six, six might be standard, and it maybe it's, it's good for some people to have six sessions through the EAP for a short-term issue. But maybe it's apparent that some, you know, certainly there's things that someone could call it EAP about, there'll be readily apparent that it is a, you know, a long-term therapy issue.
Great question, Andrew. We did have that conversation with Aurora as part of our finalist meeting and had asked a very similar question, that if it is obvious that ERC, excuse me, that EAP is not the appropriate solution for their issue, will they move them into that referral process sooner? And they had said absolutely. Ultimately, we want to provide access to care at the place that best serves your employees and their families so that they can, you know, do the best job for kids in the district. So, good question, Andrew. I think that is an option. We know that Aurora is open to that option, but also we feel like six is the happy medium to provide enough access for people who could benefit just from the employee assistance program.
Thank you.
Aurora had actually said too, that usually they can tell in the first session or two if they need to be moved on. James.
So you had seven. But you sent to the RFP out here, four responded. How many made finalists?
The RFP went out broadly and publicly. Seven submitted proposals. Four were complete proposals that offered pricing along with their information. We interviewed one finalist, we considered three. I would say three of the four were considered for their services. But one was interviewed based on the feedback from the BAC meeting prior to scheduling the finalist interview.
So as far as costs, I don't have any comparison data between what this vendor will cost compared to the previous vendor?
So the previous vendor, prior to June of two thousand twenty-two, the district was paying thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents per employee per year. And that was on a thirty-six-month contract. The proposal from Aurora would be for twenty-six dollars and four cents per employee per year. And that would also be on a thirty-six-month contract. And the district would have the option for a two-year extension at the end of that initial thirty-six months.
Is the extension at the same price? Or is there?
It's not determined what the pricing is beyond the initial thirty-six months.
Brian.
This, with our previous provider being not affiliated with one of the local healthcare providers, as far as I understand. I assume that if. A client, if one of our employees, their primary care physician is with Bellin or Pervaya or. Something other than Aurora, that there's a system set up for them to be able to get within their own network after. The six visits if the gatekeeping thing dictates that, is that included with this?
Another great question, and that's also a question that we asked as part of the finalist interview. And it's also a question that we asked our staff, your staff. As part of the staff feedback portion with regard to the affiliation of a hospital system-based provider. First, your staff were not concerned about. The affiliation of the EAP provider with regard to where they typically seek medical care. So there's the employee feedback side of it. But Aurora also had indicated that they will refer. Members into wherever the most appropriate provider is regardless of which hospital system that is. And that's true of the EAP vendors throughout the state. Not any one of our hospital systems has enough mental health professionals to serve the need. And they, you know, absolutely want people in the system where it's where they're going to get the best care. And if that's being affiliated with where your medical doctor is, that's excellent. In if they're interested in a provider in a different system, they'll help you get there as well.
Okay, Brian.
I saw the the wait time for initial visit, is this? Through records or is this anecdotal evidence that the providers shared with us and? Is there, does that kind of address the concern as far as their capacity as well with Aurora being? Obviously, a larger player in the area that I'm sure they have more employees coming in as well partnering with them, so. Will they be able to absorb and get similar services from the other two as well? Am I clear on that question?
Let me give it a shot, and if I miss part, then let me know, please. So the information is both anecdotal and database, so a combination. They are also hiring right now in the Green Bay area. So there will be greater access to in-person providers in the Green Bay area when they bring in an additional counselor. But the data that we shared with you is what they are experiencing real time right now. For the wait times for both the initial visit and for the follow-up visits. When we asked the three providers that we did the, you know, finalist edition of questions to. We asked both about that initial visit, but then the additional care. One of the things that was a concern was, sure, you can get me in for my first visit within, you know, five days, but do I wait another three weeks then to see someone again? That's problematic, so. Did I get your question?
So they they are assuming that they'll be able to. Absorb this as far as. Taking our needs in with the other groups now with Aurora being a national. Hospital chain, and I'm sure that they have other programs with this. Are they able to, through telephonic visits? Reach outside of Wisconsin if there's a need that we'd be able, because. If they're hiring healthcare workers and mental health workers, there just aren't many of them available that we would be able to. They can absorb it throughout the national system as well as included?
It is. So Aurora is not concerned about their capacity to serve the need. Between the telephonic visits, virtual visits and in-person visits. Based on their staffing throughout their system as well as their affiliate network. Their affiliate network is both in Wisconsin as well, excuse me, as well as nationally. So I I think we were all very comfortable with the responses that they had provided regarding that.
Okay, any other questions? Nancy.
Do we have to worry about why that ERC terminated our? Like, is there something going on that they may terminate?
I don't anticipate that being a concern with Aurora. I don't know that we'll ever really understand the reasons why ERC terminated the agreement, but. We have no indication from Aurora that they're, you know, having any types of issues like this with any of their other clients right now.
And we'll just add that a number of us have had experience working with Aurora before as an EAP provider. And they've been fantastic to work with. So we are really pleased that when they came in with their RFP.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you so much for coming. We will vote on this that are, oh, what's the date? The twenty-eighth, I think, is our regular board meeting and we will be taking a vote on this. All right, the next agenda item is the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar proposal Judy Wiegand, I think, is going to be funding.
Good evening. The calendar committee, which consists of representatives from the different building levels as well as district office administrators met. Twice this year to take a look at the proposed calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. A lot of this work was already done last year. We just didn't bring it forward for a two-year calendar. So I'm bringing forward this evening the calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four, which looks very similar to one that we have this year. You will note that. We start after Labor Day. September first is usually our first day of school, but that is the Friday before Labor Day and after discussion. With the representatives from the calendar committee, we felt it was best to wait and start on Tuesday after Labor Day. And then, as you can tell from the proposed dates. We've tried to balance out as much as possible when it comes to the early releases. As well as other breaks. And which takes us into, I believe, June seventh. If we use the two weather-related days, I believe we go through June seventh. Which would be ending on a Friday. It's pretty straightforward. I don't know if there's any questions.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be the membership report and that will be Josh.
Yes, hello. No one, I know everyone's been dying to get this report this year. This is a a report I provide a couple of times a year, started doing it. I think just before COVID hit. The idea here is to understand what our membership is doing every year. If kids leave, why they're leaving and. And other enrollment trends. So typically do one in October or November after the September count. The September count date is the third Friday in September, that's that was September sixteenth this year. Then there's another count date. Which is the second Friday in January, that'll be January thirteenth this year. We have to certify the results within two weeks of the count date, but we can make review revisions after the fact. With the exception of last year when we were under. A regularly scheduled audit. In a non-audit year, we'll revise numbers. In January for September and then both September and January in June, just before we close out the school year. We receive ten thousand and five dollars per full-time. FTE, full-time equivalent. The revenue limit formula averages full-time. FTE students over a three-year period, which helps smooth out increases and decreases over time. So when we're figuring out what our allowed revenue is, it's a three-year average. So this is the formula for the membership count. You start with all of the eligible students in attendance, in in attendance is important. There, we'll talk about that a little bit later. You add in the kids that open enroll out to other districts. So those are kids that are residents of Green Bay Public Schools attending another public district. And you subtract out the ones that don't live here but attend here. And then there's a small number of resident reductions for. Unique situations like kids in jail and things like that. That comes out to your membership count. Now, aid is based on membership FTE, which is that same formula, but it applies a factor of. Zero point five for three-year-olds in early childhood and zero point six for. Four K students. The idea there is they attend half-days, so they don't count as a full kid for the purposes of. The revenue limit. All other grades are at a one point O. So here you'll see. History of count dates going back to September of two thousand sixteen, which was kind of the high point in terms of enrollment in Green Bay. You'll see both the count and the FTE along with the change, so September, January, September, January, all the way down. You can see in in both the FTE and the count. We kind of leveled off in nineteen twenty and then took a big dip after. After the pandemic. And we've been. Kind of on that same. Former trajectory post-pandemic of a. Very. Mild decline. That is adding up over the years. So I mean, you can see compared to September of two thousand sixteen, here we are six years later. Two thousand two hundred and fifty-five fewer students. Counted. Open enrollment is a part of membership. So here you'll see on the left. How many kids we have open enrolling into the district from other. From other districts, that number is typically. In the low five hundreds, it's really been remarkably stable over the last several years. Along with our open enrolled out numbers, which are on the right there. That number is generally very stable, little over twenty-one hundred per year. Not much variation there. Now, just looking at headcount, these are butts in our seats. Without doing any kind of fancy. Taking these kids out, pulling these kids in, these. This is generally the number of students that that are actually attending Green Bay Public Schools. You can see again, a decrease since twenty sixteen, two thousand three hundred and thirty students. Were down a hundred and forty-five from last January, last January's count date. And I broke this out beginning in with the pandemic because we saw. Some significant trends by grade level. So that top graph on the right is the headcount for three, four and five-year-olds. And you can see it just falling off a cliff between January of two thousand twenty and September of two thousand twenty. And then it did rebound a little bit, but not back up to pre-pandemic. Levels. The one through, grades one through twelve headcount, you'll see on the bottom right there, that's been more of a linear trajectory. That really didn't have much of a blip. With the pandemic, so the. The. Largest portion of our losses in headcount were three, four and five-year-olds. Coming out of COVID. So a little bit about attendance, the kids can only be counted if they're in attendance on the count date. They're absent, you've got to prove, you can still count them if you could prove that they attended before the count date and after the count date and remained enrolled through that whole time. The last couple of years, not including this year, so last year and the year before, we had a really hard time. Counting students due to attendance rules. So this report from this time last year would have showed. God, we think we have all these kids, but we haven't been able to verify attendance. And then when I came back in January, that number dropped by a few hundred students. We have been lucky this year, though. So. We also take a look at exit reasons in in this report. There are a number of reasons, a kid might be counted in one count date and not on the next. The, I mean, this time of year, the most common reason that a kid that was counted last January wouldn't be counted in September is that they've graduated. But other than graduation. Kids can move. They can unenroll if they're below compulsory age, we do see that. You know, maybe attending when they're three years old and not attending four K. They could open and roll out, homeschool, transfer to a private school or dropout, and there there are. Other reasons that a student may exit. Do you want to bring up that if a student transfers to another public school? We end their enrollment record. Here in when the receiving school requests records, so. If they move. Out of the area. Once we get confirmation from another public school through a records request, that's when we. Update that that end status. Now, if a student transfers to a non-public school, so if they go to a parochial or a homeschool. We don't always get a records request. So it can be a little bit tricky to figure out. Whether kids ended up at a parochial school or or ended up homeschooling. Sometimes we. Only find out about it if it's actually disclosed by the family after they're already gone or the school they're attending discloses it because the kid needs transportation. Or for title-one purposes. For homeschool students, we usually receive documentation from the state. Open and rolled out students are really easy to identify. Because all that information is there available to us in a system the state has called Opal. So. Exit reasons, I used to do a graph here, but it. Looked really bad. So I changed it to a table. So. In the middle there, you'll see, you know, graduation is the number one reason this time of year that they're not going to be counted. In the middle there, you'll see, you know, graduation is the number one reason this time of year that they're not going to be counted. Um. The next most common reason is just that they move out of. Our attendance area. Um, there are a few other. Exit reasons, I'm not gonna read through them all. Um, it, it's important to know, though. Note, though, you know, we have twenty-seven hundred kids that were counted in January, but not in September. But we also have twenty-six hundred kids that weren't counted in January, but now are counted in September, right? So kids are coming and going all the time. Um, the, the net effect of that is down a hundred and forty-five from last September. Okay, these are some new slides. I'm kind of excited about them. So, um. Voucher reimbursement rates for, uh, K through eight student, that's eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars for nine through twelve, that's nine thousand and forty-five dollars. And then there's something called the special needs scholarship program, which provides thirteen thousand and seventy-six dollars per student. Um, and then. New last year, we started, um. Having resident students attending a public charter in Howard called New Leaf Academy. That reimbursement rate is nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four. So the public charter is more like open enrollment. We get to count those kids and then we make payment to the serving entity, whether. In open enrollment, that's another Wisconsin Public School District. Um, in the case of New Leaf, that's a, a public charter school. Vouchers work a little bit different. The state basically redu- reduces our aid by, by that amount. So, um. It's, that becomes an issue of revenue versus in expense. Like the, um. Like the, the charter is in open enrollment. Um, last year, the district had thirty-eight students at that public charter. This year, we have fifty-seven students at nine thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars a piece. So here's, um. Here's the new graph. So the way the voucher program works in Wisconsin is they cap. The number of vouchers available. By the district's enrollment. This year was at seven percent of enrollment. It's going up one percent every year for the past few years. That's what you see in that blue. That blue line. The red line was, is the number of students actually accepting vouchers. So what you see here is there's a lot of voucher money left on the table and the number of voucher students has actually started to flatten out. Um, to the point where we had overestim- overprojected. Um, the number of vouchers that we expected to have this year because that cap was increasing by one percent. It only went up by twenty-two students despite that, um. The cap rising significantly. So we're gonna continue to watch this, but it does appear that we've kind of. Um, as a community capped out, um, the number of students seeking vouchers. Which is. Potentially good news for, for the district. The line you see there is going to be the levy. For the vouchers. And then last slide. I wanted to show this because as you're all aware. And we've been talking about this a lot, the state froze revenue limit increases at zero percent over the last two years. In. During a time of record inflation. Um, however, they did not freeze increases on, um, the per pupil. For vouchers in chart for, for, uh, these, this happens to be vouchers. They did not, uh, freeze the. Per pupil on vouchers, although I do think charters went up too, right? Yeah. So while we were frozen in revenue. Um, they were not. So, um. You know, it's, it's pretty mild. If you look at the, the regular vouchers, we're talking about fifty bucks a year over the last couple of years. Per student, but you know, that adds up. If it, if it were fifty bucks a year here at Green Bay, we're talking about two million dollars in our operational budget. That could have been added. So I wanted to make you aware of that and there ends. Membership report. Does anyone have any questions?
Right.
Just, I'll hit the button either way. There had been discussions, I believe at a state level before switching the. Average from a three-year to a five-year rolling average. Do you know if that is still something that's being discussed or is that pretty much failed?
It's hard to know, um, at the state level what to expect because the two sides don't really get along or agree on very much. Um. So it, it's, it's very hard to predict. It, it wouldn't shock me. Uh, we do. The decline in enrollment that we're seeing in Green Bay is not, um. We, we've talked about this at this table. It's, it's not specific to Green Bay. It's really statewide. I think we're down. Over three percent, um, in the number of students enrolled statewide over the past couple of years. And we're down. What about five percent, something like that. Um, a number of districts do take advantage of a decline in enrollment. Exemption on, on the revenue limit. I. I'm not sure, um. I'm not sure I've heard anything, uh, moving forward on the five-year versus three-year average, though.
James.
On your new, uh, chart on page thirteen. The levy line. Can you explain exactly what that represents? Cause I recognize that, you know, we're capped out at ten thousand and five dollars per student, right? What's the equalized aid in, in relationship to the levy line that you? Are representing here.
I'm gonna try to explain this and if I screw it up, I'm going to expect Sarah and she to come up here and give you the right answer. Um. I think that we. I, I better just invite them up. Well, one of you please explain that.
So the, the nature of my question is, is it? Uh, is it, um, realistic to represent? The aid that we receive from the state on one of these charts to provide comparison to what the. Money that is outflow versus inflow, and if any of our localized levy. Goes to fund vouchers or if it's all just a displacement of state aid.
I think I caught that, James, but, um, so. Because we levy, right? So that's part of our, that's part of our local levy. So whatever we get in aid, then it's offset by this amount as well. So. Property tax plus equalized aid equals our levy. This is included. In that formula. So. If this number goes up. Right? It's just however much aid we have, that property tax, this is included in that property tax number. So overall. It's included in that formula. Does that? Is that answering your question? It doesn't appear to be.
So I'm, I'm looking at the scale and that's what's confusing me because the scale is at seven point five to, well, now it's probably nine million. And I'm trying to understand that, uh, cause our levy is fifty-two, fifty-three million. So you're saying of that levy, that fifty-seven million dollars, if we had. A full utilization of vouchers would, um, be displaced. That are sent to private schools via the voucher program.
We would levy for that full amount and then we would pay that amount out. So it's an in and an out essentially in the. In our budget. So it's a revenue coming in. And then it's an expense going out. So if we looked at it that way, so vouchers coming in, vouchers going out, then it's a wash at the end of the year.
Brian?
And I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, um, when you're talking about the, uh. Special needs, uh. Scholarship program, is that what they called it? Um. Does that also have a first poll or is it treated as similar as far as the vouchers are as far as, um. Reimbursement or is it treated like the charter funds? Does that have the first poll on our? Resources?
No, all, all the vouchers are, are the same. There, there are two different lines, one for the regular vouchers and one for the, um, special needs scholarship.
Any other questions? Nancy.
Okay, so for the special needs scholarship program, so we would give. That much money for a special needs student who would go to a parochial school or a private school?
If they're awarded that scholarship, yes. Yes, we.
Would there be a double? Double whammy then because like I know we have teachers who go to. Parochial schools and work specialized teachers who go there like speech therapists and things like that. So then they wouldn't, it's either one or the other.
We would still provide those services even if they received that scholarship. So our expenses with respect to. Private school students do not end with voucher expenses.
Okay, anything else? Think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Already the final, um, item under operations portion of our agenda is a reclassification of positions. I think Vicki, you're gonna speak to this.
Yes, this is a continuation of. Uh, what we brought to you in July where we're cleaning up the org chart. Changing dot job titles, um, to make them better aligned with industry standards. If you recall in July, that was the Department of Technology that we talked about. Where when we post a position, we wanna call it what their peers in the public or the other sectors would recognize. Uh, so we are bringing forward the legal department. Uh, payroll. And then cleaning up. The safety and security coordinator position. Um. The needs of the district have changed quite a bit since these job descriptions were originally, or last brought to the Board of Education. Uh, so these are the changes that we're proposing.
Okay. Uh, is. Anything else? No, anybody have any questions? We will vote on these at our next board meeting. Okay. Um, that concludes the operations portion of the agenda. Laura, I think you'll be facilitating policy and governance.
Good evening. So we have, um, a couple of policies and rules to go over. And for discussion, so I'll turn it over to, um, Melissa to, um, begin the discussion with those.
Uh, good evening. First, we have on the agenda policy and rule six seventy-two. Um, we did just recently. Make a number of changes to policy and rule six seventy-two, but in the course of that discussion, uh, board member James Larraly had a few questions and. Um, some, uh, ideas for improvement in those po- in that policy and rule. And after meeting with James and, um, Josh and Angie and Sarah. As well as Jake, we are bringing back a few tweaks to the policy and rule with respect to. Providing, uh, clear guidance to administrators as well as to the board as to when. Contracts must be brought to the board and what criteria the board would like to see in reviewing those, those contracts. For approval and, um, renewal. James, I don't know if you wanna add anything that I missed from our discussion.
Uh, no, I think you covered it. Uh, really, this is, um. Uh, you know, a formalization of some of the questions that I had around contract renewal, um, and making sure that. We didn't get into a situation where, you know, a couple of different scenarios. One, where we kind of piloted a program. We got into a contract, but then upon renewal really didn't have to come back to. The board, even though number of licenses or costs could change, um, dramatically. But the other one is, uh, vendors, uh, taking opportunity at renewal to change their pricing structure. You, you buy technology, you lease services, and then upon renewal, they take the opportunity to start. Increasing the profit margin off of that particular contract in place. Um, so. The twenty percent identified was a starting place. So if you want to take some time, that is not. Based on anything but conversations where we did not want the board to get involved in minor changes. But when we're looking at the cost of a contract that would require board approval. Change to that contract of over twenty percent may be something that the board, um, would be interested in. And so, uh, you know, as far as putting forth a motion to change that and we're absolutely open to that. Um, but it also went to making sure that if you go through the RFP process. That in presentation to the board, we have enough information to make a, a, um, an informed decision. Um, so we added criteria around what needs to be brought to the board. I think that's in the rule if I. Remember correctly. Or it's actually down on, uh, section D, uh, number one. Where we wanted to know contract term, what the renewal conditions are and costs both, uh, year and. Uh, across the entire contract. So that given a matrix of the, um, the options. But we would have enough information, um, to make an informed decision.
Thank you for bringing those, um, forward and working on those changes. Does anybody have any other comments? Or questions regarding that? Anything else you wanted to add, Melissa?
Not on that one, no.
Okay, we can move on to the, um. The rule, if there's anything that we need to discuss related to that. Or the same, um, policy procurement requirements and methods.
I, I think we covered it in the discussion of the policy. I don't have anything else to add.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll move on to policy four two four, full-time public school, open enrollment.
Can, can we do the policy and rule together, Laura? For purposes of this discussion. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, for members of the board who are, who are newer and haven't gone through this, um, before. Wisconsin law requires the school board in January to set spaces for open enrollment if you are going to deny spaces. Based on the fact that there are not enough spaces for kids outside the district to come inside the district. The law allows you to set spaces by grade and by program. So that means you can set them by first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and so on. And you can also set them by program, meaning. Um, various different programs within special education. So speech and language. Uh, deaf-hearted hearing, um, EBD, ID, those sorts of programs. The district also can choose that when you do set spaces. That if so, if a child has attended, let's say they attend during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And parents move out of the district in, um, March of twenty-three. You're allowed to finish the school year in the district, but then you need to apply for open enrollment to attend the district in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A district can choose to exempt those students from the space restrictions if they were already attending during that following school year. That is what our policy currently allows. So if I had a student, um, in first grade in Wilder and I moved out of the district in March. I apply for a tuition waiver for the remainder of the school year to stay in Green Bay. And then I apply for open enrollment for twenty-three, twenty-four. For our regular ed students, that really isn't an issue because we don't set spaces for, uh, regular ed because. When you apply for open enrollment, you apply to a district, not to a school. So we can, we can find a spot for you anywhere within our school, within our school district. You may not get the school you want, but we can find a spot for you in the district. Unfortunately, because of, um, staffing, because of limited resources. We can't always find a spot for students with special needs in our district. And so the board. Historically, since I've been here, has set spaces for those special education programs. What we now see happening when our families are moving out of the district. We see that they are, um, choosing to move students in the family who ha- uh, are regular ed and don't have an IEP. To the new home attendance area school district. But students who are special education are staying here in the Green Bay School District because we provide such a robust. And, um, higher level of special education services than some of our, uh, some of our neighbors. and um higher level of special education services than some of our, some of our neighbors. And so we're finding that um those limited resources continue to be uh spread very thin and even thinner when families move out because students who would need to go to another school district uh based on where their attendance areas are allowed to stay here in in Green Bay. Again, if a student would have to reapply for open enrollment in the regular ed, that would not be an issue, but the issue is due to the limited spaces and services here in the district due to um a severe shortage of staffing. So what we're asking with respect to policy four twenty-four and rule four twenty-four is to eliminate that um guarantee that you're able to stay in the district after you moved out if spaces are set. And families would need to apply for open enrollment, and if there are spaces in the district, then they would get preference because they already were attending, but they wouldn't get guaranteed. So they would, they would still get preference over other students on the list, but they're just not guaranteed the spot in the district. And this was brought forward by the uh Special Education Department based on a look at their numbers and how their services in some pretty tight programs are being spread. I don't know if Claudia is there or Vicki wants to add anything to the the discussion.
No, it looks like there's no indication to add anything. You explained it very well. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding the rule or policy? Or any clarification? Looks like we're good. We'll um have a vote on this at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the policy and governance portion of the meeting. I'll turn it back over to okay, our vice president.
Thank you. Um. The only other agenda item is the board meeting calendar. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for November twenty-eighth. There's a special board meeting at four P M followed by a regular board meeting. I do want to call out December because the cadence is a little different for our meetings due to the holidays. So we will be meeting on December twelfth for our work session, and then our um regular session will be on December nineteenth. So we'll have two weeks in a row when we're meeting, but then we will have off the day after Christmas. So I have it on repeat in my calendar, so I asked Vicki if we're meeting the day after Christmas, and I was very happy we're not, but I did want to call that out for everybody. Um. If I could get a yeah, is it about the calendar?
You talking your microphone. Why we didn't have any education discussions?
DPI's release of school report cards isn't coming out until after this meeting. So we bumped that topic to next month.
Basically, there were no of the concerns we had or anything. Okay, 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 good.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, the team had been working specifically on that presentation and just with the timing with DPI's release, we moved it.
So is now we're going to have two report cards? Because I know like when Mr. Merly was here, we had that other one that was self-made by our district. Okay.
Yeah, actually, um, that was Dr. Shartier and her team's work to create an alternative uh report card that better reflects the work that we do here. And so that will be part of the annual progress report in December. Yes. Thank you. Then the name was escaping me, redefining ready. That's what you were alluding to, Nancy. Yeah. Thank you.
Brian?
So the state report card's going to be unembargoed tomorrow?
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Somebody seconded, not me. I'm asking for a second. Thank you, James. Already all in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.